City Planner, please call. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Rulon.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Tally is absent tonight.
Okay. There are no special orders of business tonight. Item five on our agenda is the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of December 20th. Is there any suggestions or modifications or a motion to approve?
I will move we approve the minutes of the December 20th meeting.
Do I have a second by Commissioner? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rulon and a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zero. Oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to your microphone and state your name, city of residence, and make your presentation, and limit your presentation to three minutes. And I have a stack of cards here tonight, I guess, in that regard. Let's see. Karen Conley is the first one tonight and wants to talk to us about short-term rentals. Karen Conley.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to me tonight. I am a resident at 220 Avenue de Montalvo, and I've been a long-term activist for this area called The Loop. I'm concerned about the short-term rental proposal in that we have a few issues. One, the short-term rental should not be allocated on a first-come, first-served basis. If I get mine in first, I get to do them. Sorry, you're second, you don't. I think that we need to look at who is able to provide off-street parking for their residents, because The Loop is very, very crowded as it is. We don't have extra parking. So if somebody's going to do short-term lodging, they need to be able to provide parking for their tenants. Secondly, we don't have any sidewalks. So I used to live on the corner of Colofea and Olavista, and I would watch people from the San Clemente Inn going to the beach with their children, with their strollers, with their pets, facing oncoming traffic going down Colofea. No sidewalks, no lights. So if we're going to make this a destination location, we need to have some sidewalks that people can. And then again, you can't take away some of the driveways and make sidewalks, because again, we have no parking. So parking is a huge issue. As far as the impact upon the neighborhood with the short-term lodging, some people do rely upon that money in order to make their payments. I understand that. I also understand that there could be a negative influence on the value of the properties depending upon the tenants that come in. People, when they're on vacation, usually like to come and have a good time, and we all know that that can sometimes bring with it a few too many towels and a few too many beers and who knows what else might happen in between. So I just want there to be a consideration of the neighborhood and of the fact that it is a community, and that if it's going to be considered a short-term rental destination, that it should provide those features that people are looking for, which includes a safe route to the beach. And again, off-street parking is an absolute necessity for anybody who wants to have a short-term rental. Thank you so much for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. The next one will be Judy Rowe. Then followed by that will be Rick Rowe. If Rick would like to come forward and stand along the wall there. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Judy Rowe. I live on The Loop at 268 Montalvo. I am aware of the city of San Clemente is being sued by the Vacation Rental Alliance, and I also know that other cities in Southern California are dealing with the same issue. I am here tonight to speak to you about the quality of life on The Loop. The Loop is a residential neighborhood with very high density. Those of us who live there or own there are aware that we need to be especially respectful of our neighbors as regards to noise and other nuisances because of the close living quarters. I've heard some rumblings about the city possibly considering relaxing the restrictions surrounding STLUs and bed and breakfasts for The Loop because of the lawsuit. I'm extremely concerned with the idea of relaxing any restrictions for The Loop, because most people who are on vacation are not concerned with the quality of life for the residential neighborhood they're in. They're thinking about having a lot of fun. The way our properties are aligned, many bedrooms are next to patios. Therefore, noise on patios makes it difficult for others to sleep. Here are a few anecdotes for you. A young couple said their neighbor recently started allowing short-term rentals and they had been up and not been able to sleep the previous weekend because seven college guys were partying all night, and the young couple's bedroom is next to the partying patio. Another man told me that he has lived in The Loop for over 15 years and that his neighbor recently decided to allow short-term rentals. He said it has completely changed his quality of life. Another man recently moved to The Loop from Pacific Beach because he wanted to get away from the craziness of vacation rentals. He was extremely upset to hear that might happen on The Loop. Major concerns for any influx of vacationers include lack of parking, which Karen touched on, increased noise, lack of security, and absentee owners. I started the petition on The Loop so the San Clemente Planning Commission, the San Clemente City Council would receive feedback from residents and/or owners who have made The Loop their homes. There are 110 signatures on the petition. I emailed it to the city clerk who forwarded it to Amber Gregg. I have the petition in my hand, and I'll give that to you before I leave. The petition is, and this is what it says, it says, "This petition is to advise the San Clemente Planning Commission, the San Clemente City Council, that we, The Loop residents and our homeowners, do not want our neighborhood to become overrun with STLUs or bed and breakfast. The Loop is a residential neighborhood where people have made their homes. It is not a resort. We love our laid-back way of life and want to maintain the peacefulness of The Loop. Please do not consider any zoning or code changes to The Loop that would make The Loop less restricted to STLUs and bed and breakfasts and the rest of San Clemente's residential neighborhoods." At this time, I'd like to ask all of you who are here to support the petition, please Thank you, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rick Rowe, I guess now, and then followed by Gail Gordon, and after Gail will be Diane Dwyer.
Can we give our time to Rick?
No. You get, you get your, he gets three minutes, you get three minutes. Go for it.
My name is Rick Rowe, 268 Avenue de Montalvo on The Loop. My background is a master's degree, and this is my presentation up here I wanted to share with you. In engineering, I have a concentration in operations research, which I often use in my work, so I use a little bit on modeling. As I look today at the city website, we are a star, we are zoned a star neighborhood, and that is probably the best compromise for us and the environment we're in. We do not want our zoning to be changed to one of STLU areas in the city. As for the lawsuit against the city, one of the claims is that they are trying to help low-income and moderate-income people along, have, afford access to the beach, seems to have little merit to me, because we have six hotels and 213 rooms at an average price of $98 per night within very short walking distance of The Loop. I checked yesterday. I found 11 short-term rental, Loop rentals on the web that average five people per unit at an average price of $224. So it's not because of we don't provide access through our hotels. That's attached to my presentation. I then create a model of the impact of the star STL ordinance on The Loop in particular. With 20% of our 369 residences being allowed, we would have 74 short-term rentals sites possible. But modeling it with only using 50, in my opinion, our neighborhood could lose about 150 to 250 full-time known rental neighbors, and the remaining 700 to 1,000 of us who live there full-time would have to learn to cope with between 6,000 and 12,000 annual short-term visitors we do not know. The attached model is pretty simple. Assuming a star STL has to generate the same money they would if they were renting it for a month, using $2,100 a month, which is basically about the average for a two-bedroom apartment on The Loop, and then using the attached $224 average per night for the 11 existing rental ads, you need to rent it 10 times a month, times 12. They average five people per night in their property and their ads. The rest is just math, your pick, but I'm saying it's 6,000 to 12,000, see most likely. As you can see from the city zoning map, and Amber, or somebody, could you put that map up? The residents who signed the petition represent all areas of The Loop, so they're all red dotted, so it's not like one particular area, it's a large number of people around The Loop don't want it. Also, could you go to the next one, please? The aerial view, you can clearly see, if you haven't been on The Loop, how dense and proximate everything is. There's absolutely no room for anything. That's why we have the concerns we have. Parking, as has been said, is a major issue. So I did a parking study about a week ago, tried to determine the number of street parking spaces, which is difficult because nothing's marked. It's a residential area. The Loop can probably accommodate between 140 to 160 cars in the street, maybe eight to 10 open slots at 7:00 a.m. I did it four days in a row. Guaranteed, though, in the spring, summer, and fall, that number drops to clearly none as soon as the surfers show up. My estimate is that we could, my estimate is that we could see another 50 to 75 more cars looking for parking of 50 or more stars or STLUs are approved. And even if the application says they have parking on site for one or two more cars, the real problem is how do you keep that enforced? Again, more studying and thought should be given as how to make this work for everyone. Last year, the city issued 405 street parking permits to full-time residents, 260 permanent and 140 for guests.
Thank you. Please wrap it up. Thank you very much.
So we would like to participate and help, and if you'd like to have people in The Loop who actually know what it's like to live in The Loop, we'd like to be involved. Thank you.
Okay. It should be Gail Gordon.
Yes, I live on The Loop. I happen to live in a building that does both long-term and short-term lodging units right at the moment. Yet I, during the winter, when we do not have a lot of the short-term lodging units, my life is so much nicer, so much easier. The building is well-maintained, no problems. We don't have any issues with people with pool problems or unruly guests. But during the summer, when all of a sudden all our long-term, they kick out the long-term rentals and put in the short-term lodging units, all of a sudden, we have people in the pool that are causing trouble. We have people throwing beer cans over balconies. It's my quality of life, plus it's also the value of my property. And if I went, I would like to keep the value of my property, so I definitely think the short-term lodging units, the long-term's fine. The people we have there are just fine when we have long-term, but short-term really does impact, I would say, the value of my property because of the quality of, it's not everybody, but we do get the partiers. And when we do, we get some real problems.
Thank you. Let's see. You're, you're.
Yes, I'm Diane Dwyer.
Thank you, Diane.
I also live on The Loop, and I found that, again, that the parking is a problem in the area. As I have getting older too, there are certain things that happen on The Loop with your noisy people, young people that are drinking during the early evening and going into the, the, well, later evening, and as Gail said, leaving their beer cans and other things out there. Also, I was informed by the police department that there is a area there that you have rehab, a lot of rehab people in the area. In fact, last year, my daughter's purse was stolen. They just came up the stairs, grabbed her purse, and all out they went. And that's when we found out. The police department said that with the rehab people in there, we don't know what, who our renters are. And I don't care for the, the long-term renters are fine. It's the short-term renters that seem to be creating the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Marlene Tilly, followed by Ken Eastman. Marlene's not going to speak. Okay, Ken Eastman? Did I pronounce it? Ken? Ken Eastman? Kathy Foster? Roger Foster?
We're here, just to support.
Okay. Jill Martin. Followed by Robert Lacy.
I live on The Loop also, 219. We've been there since 1976. We've seen a lot of changes and an increase in the parking, the non-availability of parking. Even now, the people that live on our street have to clamor for a space. It's so overpopulated, and I think if short-term came in, there's not going to be enough parking. It's, it's hard enough as it is. The noise level, when vacation renters come in, the short-term, they party, party, party. They have no regard. They could care less. They leave the trash in the streets. It's just totally different than how it was a long time ago. And I know we live in the future, in the present now, but it's just changed, and it's not been for the better. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. See, Robert Lacy, and then followed by Sandra Beeler.
I live at 264 Avenue de Montalvo. In a previous life, I was, started a apartment REIT and took it public on the New York Stock Exchange, so I've got a little residential background. Going short-term rental changes the nature of the neighborhood, and it moves it from long-term residential neighborhood into a transient motel hotel operation. And what is likely to happen if you change the zoning here is you're going to displace families who are long-term renters at reasonable rents. You already have a short, a shortage of affordable housing in the city of San Clemente. Changing the zoning is going to exacerbate your housing problem, and it will fundamentally change the neighborhood, the nature of the neighborhood. Parking's an issue. It's going to get worse. Crime's an issue. It's going to get worse. Property values tend to go down, which will affect your property taxes long-term. I know that Proposition 13 locks them up, but as they turn over, property values go down, revenues go down, your expenses go up because you're going to have more police, more fire, more services required by transients. And I don't know how you're going to change that revenue cost ratio. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Sandra Beeler, followed by, is it Caitlin Ozier or Katharine Ozier? How's the name? O-S-I-E-R, Ozier?
Hi. I live on The Loop at 264 Avenue de Montalvo, and I would just like to state my objection to any changes in our present zoning. I understand we are zoned as a star zone, which allows resident apartment building owners to rent out vacation rentals. I, I believe that I understand this, the ordinance correctly. I think that is just fine. The people who live in their building are invested in the neighborhood and are there and responsible for whoever is on their property. So I'd just like to say that I object to any change in ordinance.
Thank you for coming. Did I get your name right? Caitlin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Catherine. Ozier, O-S-I-E-R. Yes, good evening. What I'd like to talk about is expectations. When we first moved down to The Loop, which is 1995, it was kind of a little diamond in the rough, if you will. There was a lot of mixed full-time owners, part-time renters. It really wasn't a very, I should say, high, high-rent district. And the reason why we liked it so much is because it wasn't a high-rent district. It was quiet, and it had a feel of a community right off the bat. Over the years, it's become a really nice place to live, because people have taken the time to increase the property values by painting their homes and putting in landscaping and so forth. And I do believe with all my heart that if the short-term rentals, off-site property owners are allowed to use their properties on The Loop as short-term rentals, it's just going to change, and it's never going to be the same again. And I have, I do have an experience with a short-term rental, who lived, came in about two years ago next door for the summer. It was a week. It was a group of teenagers, and for seven days and seven nights, it was nothing but noise. It was nothing but loud music. It was nothing but trash. And God forbid, I say something, because they would flip me off. And I can just foresee that, if that's, if that's what this panel is going to suggest, that we change the zoning for it to be like that, because it will never, ever be the same. It's a little gem of a place, and it's just, it's just not meant to be an area for people to rent out their homes off-site and make a bunch of money. And if that's what they want to do, then they go to the pier, they go to North Beach, they go to Laguna, but leave The Loop alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anyone else? Does anyone else wish to speak on this issue tonight during this open period of discussion? And that was the last card. And for the record, we did get a hard copy, I think, of Mr. Rowe's presentation, so on the, delivered on the dais, and we gave, provided one to the recording secretary. So thank you all for coming tonight, and appreciate your time and your, your community cohesiveness. With that, we have to move on on our agenda here. Nothing on item seven, our consent calendar, which there's nothing on tonight. Public hearings, a public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Item 8A, 136 Avenue de Victoria Cultural Heritage Permit 17199, tentative parcel map 2017-184, Casa Victoria Triplex. Ms. Norwood, good to see you again, and happy new year.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Norwood, contract planner. This is a request to construct a triplex residential building and approve a tentative parcel map to allow separate ownership of the units as condominiums. The project is located on Avenue de Victoria in the mixed-use 3.1 zoning district with the architectural overlay. The applicant proposes to construct a two-story, 6,814-square-foot triplex with covered parking. A tentative parcel map is also requested in order to allow separate ownership of the units as condominiums. All three units contain living space on the first and second levels with shared access to two covered parking spaces for each unit. The project also includes rooftop decks, rooftop deck and balconies for private open The project requires approval of a cultural heritage permit because the rear of the site abuts a property-containing and historic resource, and the site is on the architectural overlay, is in the architectural overlay. The project is separated from the historic resource by approximately 55 feet. The project is designed to be consistent with the neighborhood, improve the street scene, and avoid visual and physical impacts to the historic resource. This vacant lot is 6,000 square feet in an area with a mix of residential and commercial uses that includes one- and two-story buildings. The city's development management team reviewed the project and determined that it meets city standards and requirements, including approval of a reduced back-up distance for circulation of the site, urban open area, and preliminary landscape approval by the city's landscape consultant. This project was also reviewed by the Design Review Subcommittee, and the applicant incorporated design changes as suggested by DRSC. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Cultural Heritage Permit 17199 and related tentative track map, tentative parcel map, subject to conditions of approval contained in the associated resolution. Before I close, I would like to note that the resolution contains a condition requiring coastal commission review. This project is exempt from that, so condition number 13 should be removed from the, from the resolution, since the project is exempt. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
For Vanessa. So again, we're talking about the landscape plan after, after we get a chance to look at it. Has, has Pat Murphy looked at the landscape plan at all?
Yes.
Or is, is his report in the package?
He did not provide a report, but he has preliminarily approved the preliminary landscape.
Just the way it's proposed, with no changes?
No changes, so, so far, no changes now.
Is there a way that we can get a hold of that report in the package for future projects? Because I didn't see, see a report from Pat Murphy.
Well, no, they're just, the applicant's landscape plan is in the package.
Yeah, but I just would like to see if he had, if there's any notes, maybe just if there's notes or recommended changes or modifications. I would just like to have that information here, so the project's here in its entirety, so we can, I mean, there may be a major element, maybe it's a tree, a large tree, and that could change the entire character of the project.
Sure.
And if there's a recommendation for something different, a removal, so we don't, we don't have an opportunity to, you know, be a part of that discussion after it passes through.
So perhaps staff can make a note in the staff report if there are any major revisions needed to the preliminary landscape plan for planning.
City Planner, and the future references could add Mr. Murphy's comments provided as far as notes to the, to the planner for a part of the staff brief.
Yeah, we're happy to. Sometimes it's literally one sentence that says approved as proposed, or preliminarily approved as proposed. But if he does have comments, we do provide those through the DMT process, and those are to be addressed prior to, to coming here, too, is the goal.
Mr. Blackwell's always had a strong interest in the, in the landscaping palette, and so I think he, it's a reasonable, if Mr. Murphy has comments, to, like I say, it's one line I incorporate into the staff brief.
And there were no, we'd be happy to, substantial comments on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions of, of staff? Any other questions of the staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you do? Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something earlier. I talked to Amber about it, and I just want to get clear in my own mind. Is the particular location of this property within the zoning, proposed zoning for short-term vacation rentals?
Amber?
I can look that up while we're sitting here to find out.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing it up is that it's, it's mentioned here in the, in the conditions of approval number three, and it, not clear in my mind. It says that it's not permitted, but it also says that it needs city approval, so I'm wondering if it would be permitted with city approval. So that's why I'm asking the question, just to get clarity on number three.
If it's in an STLU zone, it would need to go through the permitting process in order to be approved for that. If it's not in the STLU zone, but is converted to a star, let's say, where it's a short-term apartment rental, they would also need approval for that process as well. So yes, it would have a...
If it's not in those zones, it would be not allowed.
And if it's not within the permitted STLU zones, they could not do an STLU here, if I'm understanding correctly.
Correct. City approval should be given, so.
Exactly.
I'd still like to know where it sits in that regard.
I think it's down the Pier Bowl, but that's correct. Let's just check on it. Good question. Any other questions of staff at this time while the city planner's looking up the zoning? While we're waiting on that, should we proceed to the applicant having any comment presentation?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, hello. My name is Michael Luna. I'm the architect and owners representative for the project. I do have the ownership here with me tonight. They're looking forward to building a, hopefully, a nice quality Spanish project in the downtown, and we hope that you'll find the project approvable. So fortunately, I get a little bit more room to work with. This is not just a 40-foot-wide lot, I've got 60 feet to work with. And that has allowed us to do an additional unit. And these units are townhouse-style. They have very generous outdoor living opportunities. As a matter of fact, we greatly exceed the total urban area requirement, and almost half of our, or actually just over half of the site, square footage is dedicated to rooftop decks, other decks, and other open area and courtyards around the sides of the project. The landscaping also exceeds the minimum area requirements. With respect to the cultural heritage permit, our project stepped back, steps back at the second floor in the rear of the project, particularly the rear left corner, or the rear, that would be the western, southwestern corner of the project, steps back there at that corner where the adjacent historic property is...
From the historical asset, thank you.
So I think that we're being sensitive to the historic project, and certainly with our Spanish design, hopefully will be compatible with that historic house as well. The project is designed with security in mind, being that it's housing in the downtown. We've been careful to design it in such a way that we have gates and garage roll-up doors and so forth, so that folks can't meander into the project and, at night, and find a place to stay overnight. So we have a gate, a nice entrance courtyard-type effect that we can see over in here. So there's a couple of things that this has allowed us to do. We think it enhances the pedestrian experience on the street by having this gated entrance and this nice archway to come into a bit of a courtyard, where the entrances to the units can be found. There's a fountain inside this corner in here, and we've enhanced the pedestrian area by including tile surrounds on the window here, and interest in graphics and signage, and a lot of details which we think will hopefully make the street experience nice for this project, and enhance the street scene and the pedestrian orientation of the street. I do want to draw your attention, please, to Condition of Approval Number 35, which I'm hoping to have some discussion on, particularly since I'm seeing this now on many projects that I am processing, and this particular condition of approval seems to be, or this policy seems to be requiring an acoustical analysis report for literally all the projects I'm doing currently, whether in the downtown or outside of the downtown. And it seems that, you know, it actually does put quite a bit of additional cost burden on to owners to have to provide an acoustical analysis report for virtually every project that I'm seeing now. And it just seems that, well, actually, what I'm really looking for is some guidance and hopefully some discussion on why this particular project would require an acoustical analysis. Typically, an acoustical analysis is required if you're on a major arterial highway or right adjacent to a freeway, where what's called a CNL, these are measurements of sounds that are, that are generated from large arterial highways and so forth, and the levels typically are just not found this many blocks away from a freeway. So it does, I'm hoping to get some feedback on this, and actually, of course, we're hoping that this can be removed from the conditions for this project, because I just don't see the need for it. We're just not on a freeway, we're not on Coast Highway, and so forth, so I'm hoping to get some feedback on that. The rest of the conditions of approval appear to be in order. We hope that you like the project. Clearly, as stipulated in the staff report, we've met all development criteria. We're well within height limits, setbacks, density, and all other considerations, so hopefully you'll find the project to be acceptable. And of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm assuming that you don't object to deletion of Condition Number Three?
I'm sorry, what's that?
You don't object to deletion of Condition Number Three, the coastal commission requirement?
I have no problem with...
Deleting that.
Yeah, I actually brought this up tonight. I, yeah, we're not on the coastal zone on this one, so.
Does anybody have any other questions of the architect? I would say, though, Michael, we have required acoustical analysis, like on El Camino Real, Del Mar, for our, due to the one alley split between commercial and residential. Before, there was a unit in the north El Camino Real area, it's going to be the rooftop residence restaurant, I think, and it was across the street from a mixed-use development, and so there was some, there was acoustical requirements we've levied in that area over the last several years, as far as within a commercial development next door to a residential area, I remember that. But that I'll defer to the city planner or the city attorney as far as the acoustical requirements here of Number 35.
And it looks like it's being generated by the general plan, a noise element of the general plan. But if there's a noise generator, if there's a rooftop deck or something, and they're generating the noise, it seems like that should be controlled to the degree as possible. But to burden bloody every developer doing something, to have to have this additional expenditure seems another burden, it's another thing, another hoop to jump through, and another expense on top of many, many, many other things that they have to go through. But perhaps you have something additional, Amber?
Unless anything specific came out of DMT that Vanessa wants to make us aware of, I don't see why there would be a need for this condition on this project, and I would recommend striking it, and we can go back to you and talk with our building friends and find out why on a residential project.
Because we recently approved one of your projects, just a street over and down. It's not a, not a triplex, it was your standard burdensome lot you've dealt with, but I don't remember acoustical analysis.
It wasn't required there.
That's only a block away, I think, or a block over.
No, sir, it was not required on that.
Down on the 200 block of...
Right, and we also did Pasadena Court over in the Pier Bowl area.
And a couple on Cabrera over in the west side.
Right, and Pasadena Court has that requirement on it, and it just doesn't seem to make any sense. I'm trying to get that one removed at this point as well.
Do we know if the building department is doing this to protect the other neighbors or to protect the people who are living in this structure?
The acoustical analysis will be for this structure, and what that noise impact would be on the residents inside this structure.
Okay, so if there's noise outside in the street, et cetera, this is to make sure that they're not disturbed by it?
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, we did that for your project, which was down on South El Camino Real.
Yes, up against the freeway.
That's understandable, because we're right next to the freeway.
Absolutely, up on the freeway, the project.
Those 10 units you did down.
Yes.
I'm, I don't have any, oh, I mean, good on here. We have other questions here. Let me get down to Commissioner Wu, you have a question?
Amber, can you have the building department to provide a sample acoustical analysis? Because it can be as simple as, we have a building assembly, it's a wall, it has a certain sound improvement rating, and that may suffice. But it may be, the building department is talking about some statistical acoustic model thing, is there any way we can get a sample analysis, start coming to look at it? I do, I do feel this is a little, oh, some requirement that goes beyond what's necessary, but I want to hear back from the building department.
If I may provide a little clarification, how these acoustical analysis reports are done?
Let me jump in.
Sure, absolutely.
Help you out here. This isn't being required by the building department. This is a general plan element that I think staff came up with to put this requirement in, or did it come from the building official?
It did come from the building.
Building Code Chapter 12 is a reference on it.
Well, it doesn't require it for this piece of property, I'll tell you that right now. I think Michael's completely correct.
I agree.
I mean, he does have to meet, he does have to meet interior standards between units. They have standard assemblies that he can pull out, and they're tested by labs. You don't need an acoustical consultant to do it. It's not required to present it to the building department. So I don't think an independent acoustical analysis thing is required.
That's Commissioner Wu's point. We're happy to talk with the building and safety staff and find out why this is in there, why it's showing up in other projects, too, where it might not be appropriate, and see what their comments are.
Please do that. Do we have, I think, a consensus of the commission that striking, striking Condition Number 35 is appropriate?
Yeah, as long as staff will go and check with the building department. It can be picked up at, I wouldn't want the applicant to have to come back over this, but it could be picked up at council if, if there is actually some compelling reason why this has to be done, but otherwise, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Wu, your light's still on?
Yeah, a question for the staff. The original layout has enclosed a garage, and I'm happy to see that the garage becomes open carport, because it solved one of the concern that the guest parking was way behind the enclosed garage. Now it's open to everybody. You have it designed to be reviewed by the engineer, and they're okay with the reduced drive aisle width?
Yes, they approved that.
What is, what is our typical drive aisle width in this situation? 28?
I believe it's 26.
I believe it's 26, and they're proposing 24, I believe, and so it's a reduction of two feet.
No, we have 26 now.
Oh, then 28, 28, yes, two feet more.
Okay. So from time to time, engineers seem to make some exception to parking drive aisle, which I think is the right thing to do, because, and personally, I think people can just back into their space, which requires much less drive aisle width. Anytime a parking design that will make it more efficient and make it more compact, I would like to see that be supported. But I wonder, at what time the engineer will support a deviation from the standard? Part of the reason is, recently, we had another project, but, well, I'm not going to talk about the other project, but in which circumstance the engineer will approve a deviation from the parking drive aisle width?
So I don't want to speak for the engineering department, but that lies with Tom Bonniget, the public works engineer. But they definitely review projects case by case and see if they can support a deviation from their standard based on each individual project. So there's not a blanket, we will accept this deviation. They really do look at the merits of the project.
It seems like a parking aisle, a drive aisle width is simple enough that can be decided by the planning, but our city has an engineer to look at it. Okay. Another question I'd like to generally talk about is the urban open area. Is the front...
Pardon me, are we going to go into discussion now? Or do you have a question of staff?
I wait for discussion. Okay.
Are there any other questions of the applicant or staff at this time? Does anybody from the public want to discuss this project? Do we have any cards, Madam Secretary?
Yes, sir.
Well, that will close public, public hearing and enter into discussion. And I guess, Commissioner Wu, you want to start this discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, discussion about urban open area. So does a front yard qualify as an urban open area?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Does a front yard setback qualify as an urban open area?
Yes, it would.
How about the rear yard and the side yard?
Landscape area would count toward the urban open area.
Okay. Is there any requirement about the usability? Because I talk about, because in our multifamily open space requirement, there was some requirement about the private open space or group open space being usable, and therefore there are some minimum dimension requirement or minimum area requirement. Is there any requirement that's applicable to urban open area?
Not for private, open, usable area, no.
So if we have a site and we have a building, and now we have a building coverage of the site, anything that's not covered by a building is an urban open area here?
If it's landscaped appropriately.
Okay. So, so in this case, urban open area equals open area, is nothing...
Most of it's landscaped.
Okay.
Are you discussing that with us, or are you still quizzing the staff?
Well, I'm talking to the staff.
Well, I've already closed that, and we're in open, we're in commission discussion here. Do you want me to reopen a staff question period? Is that what you want me to do? I guess we've kind of finished that up, or you finish with staff right there? I'll do, I'll open it up. You have more questions of staff? We'll open it up for staff questioning, but we're actually in commission discussion. What do you want? I'll, I'll make that happen.
Yeah, if you can open that again, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, do I need to make a motion in a second on that? Okay, let's open up, reopen up staff questioning. Commissioner Wu, and then you have your light on now, too?
I can ask staff a question, too, why not?
My gosh, we're piling on here, okay.
So does an urban open area need to contribute? I guess I rephrase it. Does urban, the word urban mean anything here?
No, I think it's just a reference to the landscaped area on the property. There's a definition that is included.
Is this related specific to this project, or are you talking an overall general plan/ zoning issue here, Mr.?
Well, it's a general, but then we apply it to this project.
Would you apply it to this project? What is your concern about this project with the open spaces under discussion?
I just want to get a clarification about a concept.
Clarification about a concept?
Right.
Specific to this project?
Yeah, specific to this project.
Let me just ask, we've got a complete document prepared by the applicant that analyzed the urban open space and the square footage, and it applied, and staff reviewed that and concluded that it, in fact, was in compliance.
It exceeds the requirement.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Exceeds it.
I finished a question.
Okay, thank you. So back to Number 35, the acoustical analysis. After thinking about it, is it possible that the purpose of this is to ensure that the tenants, it's a multi-tenant identity, or it's a multifamily dwelling? Would it be possible that that condition is to protect the residents from noise sources in other units?
It's not typical that we would have this condition on this type of development. The general plan has areas of the town that identifies where we The general plan has areas of the town that identifies where we have significant noise impacts, and they typically radiate out from the freeway, and there's different thresholds that typically trigger this. And I think that's really where this is being derived from, and I think it just might not be appropriate in this project.
I would agree, under those circumstances. However, I'd also want to be sensitive to the residents within, making sure the walls were thick enough, that there was proper insulation to protect the other tenants that are sharing common walls from, you know, noise-making sources.
When you go into a condo design, and you come in with a tract map, you have to build it to a different standard for noise between the apartments also. That's in the building code. Am I correct? In other words, we have a force as a condominium with a, with a tract map concurrent with it rather than a later conversion. So, the applicant and, and the architect have to design it to that, that condominium standard, which is increased noise separation between the apartments anyway. That's, that's in the building code, unless I've, I've forgotten something here.
Well, that helps, thank you.
Are we complete with staff, or you have another thirteenth bite of the apple for staff?
No, no.
Are you, okay. I will now open commission discussion on this project. Commissioner Blackwell?
Well, thank you. I think this is a beautiful piece of work here. I think that the architectural balance is there. The, I like the use of large windows, plenty of light, the roof lines, there's some, there's some interest with the roof lines and the gables. It's very well done, and I'm definitely in support of this project.
Commissioner Wu, you're down there all covered up with maps. You even have your light on, or?
Sure, I'll turn on my light. What, are you giving me an opportunity to speak? You want me to speak? No, I.
You're looking at the landscape plan.
I'll just say briefly, I'm in support of this project for much the same reason. I think it's, it's well done. Mr. Luna may have a future in this town as an architect, so.
This might be the first one he's gotten past here, you never know.
Anyway, no, it's, it's well done, and I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Brandl?
Yes, I think we can make all the findings for the approval of the project. I've got one thing that kind of piqued my interest in talking about the tentative parcel map and the condo map. I think it is in A of the conditions of approval, fourteen A. And we say that creation of association, but that the last sentence says, unless there's some other way of mechanism of doing it. But I think to guarantee ease for the city, I would maybe not change something here, but encourage both the city attorney and staff to make sure that there's one entity that the city can come to if the landscaping isn't maintained in the front, rather than having to deal with all three, or get in the middle between the, the owners to make sure that the landscaping visible from the street is main pain. I just don't know what that last mechanism would be, and if it's, that there is no association and everybody's on their own, I think that would be problematic.
Mr. Assistant Attorney, do you have any comments on that?
I'd like to know what that would be, what, what kind of association, what kind of mechanism we have without, what kind of mechanism, without an association?
We'd have to talk internally. I don't know what that would look like, but we could certainly get creative and, and I think work that out with the applicant with staff.
So it would be a recommendation to staff, it would be a recommendation to staff and the attorney to keep that in mind as you're going through the parcel map and the CCNRs, or the option of something else.
Yeah, let's just read this for the record. "Notwithstanding the foregoing, the project consisting of four units or less, the CCNRs may provide for the maintenance described above by a mechanism other than the creation of an association." I don't remember seeing that before. Is that another new condition for the new year? We've always had a creation of a homeowners association before. I would recommend striking that last sentence.
I, I don't recall it either. We've only done CCNRs.
Yeah.
So if we, if we want to strike that portion to, to do it, we, you can.
If, if there's not a common mechanism other than an association for providing for the common maintenance, then I'd actually be concerned that it wouldn't get handled. So, yeah.
Does the applicant have any concerns about that? I would think a common CCNR and a common belly button type thing is.
Seems to me this condition is written so that there's some versatility in, in how to address this, and I'd hate, I'm hesitant to take away the versatility that is in the condition for the maintenance of the landscaping.
Versatility?
I, I, well, it's given some options.
Versatility?
I'm sorry, versatility, thank you. Appears that it's written to have some options for the maintenance of the landscaping, and I, I'm hesitant to take those potential options away, whatever they may be. I'm not sure what they could be, other than a CCNRs. But, of course, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what all options are available.
All the other, obviously, all the other conditions here require that people come forward with a CCNR thing and get with the city attorney and go through an entire litany of things. That's kind of the standard way we, we've always done this. I'm kind of leaning towards striking it out until you guys figure it out better there, Mr. Assistant Attorney.
Well, I have a question. I have, I have a statement to add. So when I first looked at this, I thought about that as well. I was just assuming that there'd be portions of the property that would be under certain, that there would be responsibility given to each unit depending on where the landscape area is. Is that, is that something that's been thought through? Is that an option? That might be an option, anyway.
Well, in discussion, what caught my fancy is, it talks about an airspace condominium, which means that there's also going to be a common space lot of the front yard or whatever, which some entity has to, either one unit or somebody has to own. And it seems to be getting complicated if it's not a conventional solution. Yeah.
Keep it simple is what I'm, what I'm hearing here.
That space would be defined in the purchase agreement.
I think what we're concerned as, about as well as the city, is to make sure this landscaping gets maintained properly. And so I think the, it should, and we do have to establish some CCNRs, whatever they may be. So I think to just direct the condition to provide for the CCNRs to address this and be part of the CCNRs, seems to make sense to me to make sure that it's addressed. And then the, the CCNRs can address any which way they want to maintain this landscape.
So could we have the city attorney come up with a language, or do you think just drop that last sentence would accomplish what we need to do?
Based on what the commission is, or has said thus far, just dropping the last sentence, I think accomplishes, accomplishes your purposes. If you're looking for versatility or versatility, as the, as the case may be.
Sunrise, high tide.
You, you, you could, you could amend that la, I apologize. You, you could amend, it's, it's his fault. You, you could amend that last sentence to.
Keep it simple.
To say something like, the CCNRs shall provide for the maintenance described above, period. And that way you're not saying, not saying the foregoing, you aren't, you aren't, you aren't giving, or taking away the option, you're just saying the CCNRs are going to provide for the maintenance that's described above.
So you're going to say, notwithstanding the foregoing, the project, you're going to just say, the last sentence would say, the CCNRs will provide for the maintenance described above?
Yeah.
Period?
I think that gets, gets the commission where they want to go.
Okay.
And I would, and I would, I would say shall as opposed to will.
Shall, okay. I'm just about ready to throw that back at you, thank you. Mr. Wu, your light's on.
I like this project. I think it's well, well-designed. I especially like the fact that the lot is a little wider, so we're able to do the parking facing the side, not having multiple two-car garage or tandem car garage facing the street. That, that improved the pedestrian experience quite a lot. It's nice-looking front elevations, the architectural articulation is nice. So, yeah, I'd support this project. I do want to point out that the urban open area is a, is a, you can see the concept, because if we were to allow the roof deck to be counted urban open area, then every project can easily make it work. Because all you need is to put a roof deck and put a couple of parts of plants on, on the roof, then you have the requirements to, to met. So, what is the original intent of that concept? I don't know. But with that said, I support this project.
Maybe that's a subject to a future study session, or whenever we get around to going to updating the design guidelines, addition of the other specific plans and piles of stuff that's on our, on our plate for the next five or six years.
We'd be happy to include that discussion.
Put it in your Jeff Hook folder, whatever it is.
It's on the list.
Mr. Smith, you okay down there?
Thanks for asking. Yeah, I definitely like this project, I approve of it. I'm a little concerned about the parking in terms of getting in and out of some of those spaces. Look pretty tight, pretty complicated. The first space and the last space could be somewhat of a challenge. It looks like the last space is designed for accessibility. I'm not quite clear if that's a requirement or not, but there's a walkway and an extra wide space there. Anyway, I like it, I'll support it. I think it's a good design.
Okay, Commissioner Wu, your light's on, you've been quiet.
I was going to make a motion if there was no other comment, but.
Okay, is there any other comment?
Yeah, Commissioner Smith, the last parking space is probably not for the accessible parking, because this is only for triplex, accessible parking is not required by that.
You have all the little nuances and changes?
I think so. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
We have two things to approve here.
I'll give this a shot. I move, we approve resolution PC seventeen dash zero-three-six, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving cultural heritage permit seventeen dash one ninety-nine, and tentative parcel map twenty seventeen dash one eighty-four, Castle Victoria Triplex. A request to construct a triplex subdivided for separate ownership on a site located at one thirty-six Avenue to Victoria, excluding condition number thirteen regarding coastal commission, excluding condition number thirty-five regarding the acoustical study, and modifying the last sentence of condition fourteen A to read. The CCNRs shall provide for the maintenance described above by a mechanism.
No.
Just shall provide for the maintenance described above, period.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wu, and do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Wu, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you got one through there, Commissioner. Okay. With that. With that, we'll move on to item eight B, one-on-one West Avenue to Vista Hermosa, conditional use permit sixteen-three forty-nine, outdoor events at outlets at San Clemente. Ms. Vasquez, good to see you tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening, planning commissioners, I'm Amy Vasquez, and I'm here this evening to present item eight B, which is a request by the outlets at San Clemente to allow outdoor events with the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. The project site is located at one-on-one West Avenue to Vista Hermosa. It's within the regional commercial zoning district of the Marblehead Coastal Specific Plan. As you all know, in order to approve a conditional use permit, specific findings must be made by the commission. The use must be conditionally permitted within the regional commercial zone. The site must be suitable for the type of use and the intensity proposed, and the proposed use must not be detrimental nor cause negative impacts to the surrounding land uses. Outdoor activities have actually taken place at the outlets since 2015. In 2015 and 2016, several individual special activity permits were administratively approved by staff. In 2017, the applicant was heard by the zoning administrator to allow fourteen events for the entire year. A representative from the Orange County Sheriff's Department and from our code compliance division have indicated that the events over the past three years have taken place without incident. The request before you this evening is very similar to the SAPs granted in 2015 through 2017, but it provides more flexibility to allow a broader range of public, promotional, and community events. Events such as an Easter celebration, job fairs, charity fundraisers, the annual tree lighting, and weekend entertainers are example of those proposed. Staff believes that these outdoor activities would actually bring the property into greater conformance with the Marblehead Coastal Specific Plan. They would create an activated community gathering space that will not only contribute to the economic success of the businesses within the outlets, but also employment opportunities for event vendors and recreational space for their surrounding neighborhoods. We are recommending several conditions of approval related to security, noise, parking, lighting, location of event structures, and alcoholic beverages to ensure that there are no negative impacts associated with these events. Staff would also like to make one modification to the draft resolution. Condition act, number one-twenty-one should actually stimulate that all amplified sounds shall be concluded by ten PM rather than eleven.
And for the record, we have a revised condition on the resolution on your dais here, and I'm assuming the applicant has had a chance to see it, is that correct?
They have, thank you so much. The applicant is here this evening. They have reviewed the staff report and the amended draft resolution, and agrees with all of the recommended conditions of approval. So we're available for any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Smith?
Amy, I do have a question. Has the police department or the fire department reviewed any of these plans for accessibility?
They sure have.
They have?
Yes, they were participants in the DMT Development Management Team process, and they reviewed the plans and the request. Provided several conditions.
Let me just tell you what concerns me, that several of these various open space layouts exist in this particular area here. I think that's where the vacant theater might be, is that right?
Yes.
Bacon now, right there, but it shows, anyway, there's a lot, there's a lot of potential occupancy, if that becomes a theater, a lot, a lot of people in there. And there's a number of these scenarios in front of that open, opening there, where there's stages and inflatable movie screens and stuff. And quite honestly, it bothers me, that, that the police and the fire department will allow a structure like that, so, really so close, there's no dimensions on this, but it looks really close to those exit doors, that honestly, I've got a bad feeling about that. It's hard for me to go along with it, to put a stage in front of exit doors in a high occupancy building, doesn't seem prudent. Has anybody else looked at this with that idea? It jumps right out at you, so why would you put a stage right in front of an exitway of a very high occupancy building? Or a theater?
The only answer I would have to that, if, if there is, the question that you're asking is, why is it there? That, as Amy had said, building and safety did review all these plans, as well as the fire department reviewed these plans, and they did not have comments on that. They had made a lot of comments, actually, and they, they did look at a lot of different scenarios, depending on the different types of events, but that was not something that they flagged as a, a concern for them. Should it need to be moved, and should it be a concern, we can talk to the applicant about moving that, and I don't think that they would have an objection to moving it further from the doors if that would be an issue.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go on record right now to say that I will not. Well, I'm gonna go on record right now to say that I will not approve of those scenarios the way they're drawn without some more exiting space around that particular venue. And there's, I don't know, I counted three or four different layouts. There's stages, there's an inflatable movie screen. You know, these are the things you wouldn't commonly put in front of the exit way of a high occupancy building, so...
Is that the old tree park?
Well, Commissioner Smith, I would like to point out, in condition number 23, it does talk about occupancy requirements and exiting paths, that they shall be kept open and available at all times. And I'll let the applicant attest to this, but it could be that they're locating those now because that building is vacant. But once that building is occupied, there is a condition that requires those exiting paths to be open and available.
That's a very good point.
That's condition number 23.
Okay, let's hold that for discussion or more questions of the applicant. Commissioner Wu?
Hi, Amy. Two questions. First, the document is consistent to refer to the noise level at 55 decibel. Is that a typo?
That is what the applicant has said, that their noise level would stay below, so it's part of their project narrative.
So, it's applicant's request or data?
Well, the level I'm talking now is about 60 decibels. So, there's a, it's not possible that a musical performance is at 55 decibel.
You're talking at 60 decibel?
Fifty-five. I'm talking at 55 decibel before the application. Normal conversation, 50 to 60 decibels.
And the freeway limit's 65, so...
65?
Decibel.
At what distance? The freeway traffic is typically 80, 85 decibels.
The national standard, 65 decibels. That's why, that's when you turn buildings.
So, we're probably talking about the noise level at the boundary of the property?
I'll have to defer that to the applicant.
Or the noise impact, considering the noise impact to the neighboring residential project. In other words, the residential parcel will receive, now, the exterior noise on those residential parcel not to exceed 55 decibel. Is that what we're talking about?
If I can go ahead and jump in here. So, the condition of the 65 decibel actually mirrors the city's noise ordinance, and so that's what the maximum allowed is, is that that be held to the 65 decibel limit. And I'm looking through here to read that, to make sure that that's consistent, but...
Should be.
I wanna see how, I wanna see how it's written to verify that it is the property line, but I believe so.
That's 65, do you?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
And we measure that like on El Camarillo with a rooftop restaurant and all that stuff.
Yes, with a noise meter, and you go to the property line and you use the measuring tool.
So, the applicant's come in with 55. Isn't that right?
Yes, that's correct.
It's their data. That's their request.
Yes.
I just don't want the applicant to inadvertently state something that's too low. So, anyway, my next question is about the fashion show. The fashion show looks like it's inside a building, inside a suite that is vacant now. Have the fire department and building department reviewed that?
They have.
Because essentially, we are changing the use of that interior space from a mercantile, a retail store, to a public assembly, and the different occupant, different occupancy group by building code, different occupant load. So, the fire protection requirement is quite different. Without any change to the system, I can hardly believe that the existing interior space will meet those requirements. On the certificate of occupancy, did it say that they can use it for assembly?
Well, the certificate of occupancy hasn't been issued for that suite yet. That's a tough question for me to answer because I'm not a building plan checker, but this has gone through their review several times, three or four times, and they have looked at all of the potential events that the applicant's proposing.
Okay. Would the applicant clarify where you're actually planning to have this fashion show? Is it, what spaces it's in?
We currently have a vacant suite, and so it's a plan right now. Hello. We currently have a vacant suite, so the plan as presented in our packet is for a suite 150, sorry, suite 502, suite 502. So, that was just one example of a space that could be used for a fashion show, and we have, we've gone before the OC Fire Authority and presented plans for these types of events, and they haven't required any additional permitting, and they've reviewed it DMT three times, and no questions ever came up about the in-suite fashion show.
Commissioner Wu makes some good points, so... Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Crandall? This will be for staff, and I think we can certainly put a condition of approval in that any occupancy that is proposed within any vacant suite shall be approved by the building official.
Yeah, that would be very easy to do.
Yeah. Probably a clean way to do it, because Commissioner Wu brings up some pretty good points for loading and all that stuff that might not have been addressed. The same with Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Ruhl?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Just to clarify this in my mind, this conditional use permit is permanent permission to do these numbers of events every year, correct? As opposed to have them coming, come back every time?
Exactly.
And how does that compare to how we do other event venues like, you know, weddings at the casino and, you know, the casa, I think places like that?
It's very similar, actually. There, many of the conditions that I've recommended in the draft resolution are pulled from those other event centers. So, the operation's very similar, but these events are, majority will be taking place outside.
Okay. And the drones, is there any plans to fly drones off the property? No? Would it be a problem if we added that to the condition about drones, that all, that any drones would have to be, stay within the property lines? Okay. Great. Those are my questions.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, so, just thinking about Commissioner Smith's comment, looking at condition number 23 that you referenced as you suggested that addressed his concern. And I was thinking that it does partially, but if we modify that condition, it would be more effective. And it, right now, it reads, "The applicant or designated shall observe all occupancy requirements. If occupancy is reached, outlet personnel can direct people to other areas of the mall. All existing paths shall be kept open and available at all times." If it read, if it read something like this, "The applicant or designated shall observe all occupancy requirements. If occupancy is reached in any structure that is adjacent to the temporary use, outlet personnel shall direct people to other areas of the mall with adequate capacity. All exiting paths, including building ingress egress, shall be kept clear, open, and available at all times." Something like that would be...
As merit, it might, you know, relate to Commissioner Smith's concerns, and that's something that hopefully the applicant can deal with. It's a good point with that theater coming online whenever you do that. Nothing like 300 people running out of a theater right into a stage.
That's a good point.
Mr. Smith, your light's back on.
Commissioner Blackwell, I appreciate your concern. I think we can all look at that plan and realize that there's not a lot of clearance in front of those doors with stages and movie screens, even though they're inflatable. I can't, in good faith, approve the plans as they're shown. I think we need, not only to do the language, but I think that we need to put some magnitude to the dimensions of something like 20 feet clear of those exit ways, some number that's more reasonable than what the plan shows, because the plan, I could not support it as the plan shows it.
Commissioner Crandall? I have a question actually for the applicant. Or any of them. How many of these events have you had a similar event already run?
I would say some version of about 90% of the packet.
That's what I thought. Okay, very good. Mr. Wu?
For Commissioner Smith's comments, may I make a suggestion? I'm looking at the staircase, and the exit seemed to be, I haven't estimated, there are two doors, and it seemed to be about 10 feet wide total? Not 100% sure, but it looks like it's in the ballpark. If we add a condition to say that any staging in front of that egress should stay clear of the exit and keep a clearance to the open space at a minimum of the same width of the egress door, does that satisfy your concern?
I would have something to add, but maybe we should save that conversation for discussion and we do our discussion.
Okay. Maybe we should refer to, put a condition in there that, make sure the fire marshal makes sure the distances are appropriate, since we're not experts in it, is really what I'm thinking.
It'll be discussion.
Mm-hmm. Undiscussion. Okay. Any other questions of...
Is it appropriate for me to add something from the applicant?
Certainly, please do.
So, the applicant has just indicated to me that those events with the stage are proposed because the movie theater has not been built or is not occupied at this time. Once the theater is there, then stages and large movie screens will no longer be proposed at that location. So, I think that we could condition that accordingly.
I think that's a very good idea. Okay. Gets the fire marshal out of the deal. Any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, applicant, would you like to, state for the record your name, please?
Sure. Good evening, commissioners and city staff. My name is Vicki McMerchie, and I am the Marketing and Special Events Manager for Outlets at San Clemente, and I am a San Clemente resident. I want to take a moment to thank the commission for reviewing our submittal this evening, and to thank city staff for all of their assistance through this process. In the last two years, I have worked with several members of city staff, and I now understand more about building codes and SAP conditions than I ever thought possible.
Welcome to the party.
Well, maybe not, actually, yeah, but we'll see by the end of this meeting. We do want to ensure that we are in compliance and being a good partner to the city. In addition to the presentation that Ms. Vasquez just shared, I did want to add a few additional details about our existing events and to demonstrate our commitment to the city and the residents. The Outlets at San Clemente opened in mid-November 2015 as the first and only coastal outdoor outlet shopping and dining destination in Orange County with more than 35 stores, and we currently have more than 55 retail and outlet stores. Our center caters to today's consumer who want one destination to shop, dine, and relax while taking in the natural splendor of South Orange County and the Pacific Ocean. Businesses of all size flourish in a strong economy, and Outlets of San Clemente contributes to a strong economy of San Clemente by increasing tax revenue, attracting visitors, and creating job growth. Development of the property created 1,500 jobs and more than 1,000 permanent positions among tenants and center employees having created since the grand opening. As a supportive member of the community, Outlets at San Clemente sponsors or participates in local events including Casa Romantica's toast to the casa, the Dana Point Turkey Trot, the Fiesta Music Festival, San Clemente's Classic Car Show, San Clemente Ocean Festival, and the Triton Football Program. We are also very excited to sponsor San Clemente Day, the upcoming 90th anniversary celebration. Additionally, the center has donated nearly $200,000 in silent auction items to more than 100 organizations in San Clemente and Orange County over the past two years, as well as offered complimentary use of our meeting and event space to a number of nonprofits, including Casa Romantica, Community Outreach Alliance, Friends of San Clemente, Peer Pride, San Clemente Historical Society, The Chamber, The High School, San Clemente Village Surf Fighter Foundation, USA Surfing, and more. We look forward to continuing these relationships and growing them through the approval of the CUP, being able to expand on these and grow in the future. Our center currently hosts a variety of seasonal free events for the community throughout the year, including Lunar New Year festivities, complimentary photos with the Easter Bunny, Cinco de Mayo, job fairs, candy crawl, a menorah lighting with a local hubbard, and an annual tree lighting celebration. In 2016 and 2017, we partnered with the Southern California Blood Bank to host mobile blood drives on-site, and we resulted in the donation of 119 units of blood and more than 357 lives saved. We host local entertainers nearly every weekend, monthly chess tournaments for kids, candidate forums, events for our military and our sheriff's department, chamber mixers, workout events, animal shows, silent discos, and much, much more. We are dedicated to supporting the Orange County community through a variety of philanthropic events, including our annual shopping extravaganza, a signature of Craig Realty Group, owned and operated center since 1998. Outlets at San Clemente inaugural shopping extravaganza, or SHOPX as we call it, held in 2015, raised more than $37,000 for 18 local nonprofits. In 2016, SHOPX raised more than $42,000 for 25 organizations. In this past year, we raised $56,000 for 38 local nonprofits. Each of those numbers represent the amount of money that's raised in just one day, something we are incredibly proud of. The center has also introduced a number of new annual fundraisers such as Barks and Brew's, which has raised approximately $15,000 in the past two years for Pet Project Foundation, the fundraising arm of the local San Clemente Dana Point Animal Shelter. In 2017, Outlets at San Clemente partnered with Susan G. Coman, Orange County, to host Pink Saves, which raised more than $3,500 to support breast cancer research. The month-long celebration featured a full lineup of events of educational nature, of survivor fun, heartwarming tributes, and special fundraisers for the local chapter of the highest government contributor to breast cancer research in the country. Outlets at San Clemente staff and merchants also raised an additional $1,600 for the 2017 Coman, Orange County Race for the Cure in Newport Beach. In just a little over two years, Outlets at San Clemente has made an unquestionably positive impact on the city of San Clemente, increasing tax revenue, attracting new visitors to nearby local businesses, employing thousands of workers, fundraising and donating more than $350,000, and creating new community event traditions. This is just the beginning, as our team will continue to build upon these successes and strive to bring even greater benefits to the businesses and residents of San Clemente for many years to come. I consider myself incredibly lucky to have this job and to get to do what I do. As you can deduce from what I've said, the packets that you received, Ms. Vasquez's presentation, these events keep our staff incredibly busy. It's easy to lose sight of how fortunate we are to live and work in this beautiful city, and that I'm basically paid to throw parties and have fun. This past holiday season...
Hopefully, Mr. Craig's not listening.
Yeah.
Paycheck get on.
I'll tell him, yeah. This past holiday season, I was reminiscing about my own fond holiday memories, and as a child, and how I can still remember all the little details. And then it struck me that through our events, we get to create and be a part of traditions and memories. A young San Clemente boy or girl will remember that they got to feed a reindeer some graham crackers, they'll remember the smell of a 40-foot tree, how happy they felt helping Santa count down to the tree lighting, and what it felt like to have snow come down on them in this little beach town. In a world where so much of our time is spent in front of a screen, or experiences can cost families so much money, it's incredibly humbling to be able to host events that are not only free and accessible to San Clemente residents, but will provide a lifetime of memories. We have reviewed the suggested conditions and are in agreement with staff's recommendations, and look forward to the hopeful approval of the CUP. I know that you have rather large packets in front of you with information on our various events, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
I have a couple of questions, and do acknowledge all your community efforts by the Craig Realty Company and the local management, and how you've plugged into chambers of commerce and the local, local community efforts. And I am, for the record, a member, on the board of the Boys and Girls Club, and we're part of that one fundraising effort, and Ms. Davis is also on the board, too. So, I do have a couple of questions. I'm gonna make sure that even through all the various, one staff change on item 21, everybody's synchronized now on the times and who does what, when, where, the adverb test of who, what, why, where, when, and for, and when we shut down, and when we're quiet, and when we're not, and when trash gets removed.
The packet we submitted actually had 10:00 PM as the ending time for noise as well, so we're completely in agreement with that.
I wanted to have a little discussion here on item 19, which is applicants shall have security on-site when alcohol is associated with these events. And a minimum of one security guard per 75 guests is required. You're comfortable with that?
We are comfortable with that, and...
That's the sheriff's department requirement. That's security guards, right?
Correct. So, we have our own onsite security that's there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
I understand that.
But we also hire additional private security.
Because in your plans, and if I look at, you know, a brewery event or Barks and Brew's, you're planning on 1,000 people.
Sure.
So, one per 75 is about 14 security guards. It's 13.33, and we round it up. So, in your plan, it says we're gonna have three outlet guards, five outlet managerial personnel, and six other security guards hired outside. So, six security guards and three other guards. So six security guards and three other guards is nine when fourteen is required. Because I don't think five outlet managerial personnel by law constitute security personnel. Are you aware of that?
Um-
Your plan seems to consider your manager or personnel part of your security detachment. I don't know if the city attorney has any comments on that, but when you're a security guard, you have certain training requirements, certain bonding requirements, and I don't know if your management meets those criteria. So you're, you might have to, what your, what your plan says and what you're agreeing to are two different numbers. I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Sure. Our director of operations is a retired sheriff from Orange County, but we are absolutely-
I know the exact guy you hired.
So sorry for him, yes. Um, but we are, we're happy to comply with the-
Okay, just let you know that-
Absolutely. We can update that.
You put on your managerial shirt because you got the duty that night for the brewery-
Oh, yeah, I'm completely trustworthy for that.
That doesn't count, okay?
Yes, sir. I'm ready.
I just want to make sure that Craig Realty knows that you've got an additional expense or requirement for security between condition nineteen versus what your plan says.
Right. We're happy to take on that additional expense.
Okay, so your plan, event plans need to be updated?
Sure.
In general, you refer to Sergeant Hartman. Is he the, the guy you call?
Yes.
You might want to position, when you update your plans, I would suggest you refer to it by a position, the sheriff in charge of, because Hartman might get promoted-
Absolutely.
... move to the jail or something like that.
Okay, will do.
Um, I have some concerns about this wedding event, which also has alcohol.
Correct.
Um, and I know we do, and it's going to be contained out there in that southwest area. I went around and looked at it. I know there's nothing there yet. It's a security plan versus alcohol versus, you're going to have like four hundred people there, you know, or whatever the number is on the plan.
Mm-hmm. Ideally, I think the max number that we would have there is a hundred and fifty. The main goal of that space is for when we eventually do put in the Ocean View Dining, the tenants there can use that lower level, the grassy area for events, but for right now, because there's no Ocean View Dining currently there, we were approached last year to do a wedding event and so that was something that went through DMT and was processed.
Once again, you triggered this alcohol requirement, so that'll send, at the wedding, you're going to have about five or six security guards-
Absolutely.
... stepping around, but you're comfortable with that?
We are.
Okay. That's all the questions I have of the applicant at this present time. Mr. Ruland, you've been waiting patiently.
Oh, thank you. Um, so you may have answered one of my questions. Have you had a wedding or event venue in that lawn area yet?
We have not. We did go through DMT and it was approved and then the applicant, who was interested in hosting the wedding, actually ended up backing out and not doing it there.
Okay. And you're proposing amplified music in that?
Yes, facing away from the residences.
And I, I saw in your report, you were talking about up to two hundred and fifty and you mentioned here one fifty. Is that, is that conditioned at all? Is there a, is there a condition that specifies the maximum number of people in the lawn area?
I didn't see a specific condition on, in the staff's conditions, but would be happy to.
You might want to consider that.
There's not one for any specific, other than the plan itself.
Yeah, it's kind of a, sort of a small area, you know, and I don't think it'd fit like three hundred people or something, but there's other, other issues as well.
Ideally, we don't want, I mean, that's not the intended use for that space. That's not the, the main goal, so we would be happy to-
Go in a way with the porta potty.
You know.
And, um, on this condition twenty-one, the new condition twenty-one that goes till ten PM, is that full breakdown? The, the, you know, by ten PM, everything is broken down and put into boxes and trucks and everything like that?
That's the ideal. I believe it's not completed by ten PM. It would have to wait until the next day.
Okay, so ten o'clock, all noise stops and if you're not broken down, you're doing it tomorrow at nine AM?
Correct.
Okay, great. And do we, is that, Amber, is that what's implied here in the condition? Because it says, uh, all outdoor amplified sound must be concluded and it sounds like we might really want to be saying-
Well, they give them time until eleven o'clock, I think, for breakdown.
Well, she said ten.
Condition forty-four.
Condition, oh, I'm sorry, forty-four.
Do we have until eleven technically, don't we?
Forty-four and forty-five.
Ten and seven AM. No, so no, no noise generating maintenance between ten and seven? Okay, great.
Currently, the only event that we have that goes past ten PM is our Moonlight Madness, which is Thanksgiving evening, and we try to combat the noise rules on that because we do a silent disco. So you don't hear anything, they just wear the headphones.
Okay.
Okay, and yeah, that's Midnight Madness goes till, uh-
Midnight.
Eleven, midnight, that is Midnight Madness, but most of the timing on this permit goes till ten or eleven, so you're going to use that. That will all continue to be a special activity permit then, outside this conditional use permit? Or you?
Uh, that's not what's proposed. It is proposed that the, I'll defer to Amy because she knows more of this, but no, that's not as proposed. So Amy, if you want to address it.
The intent is to allow that event with this conditional use permit. The conditions of approval that limit amplified sound till ten PM-
Correct.
-is within condition number twenty-one. Condition number forty-four and forty-five actually talk about breakdown, noise generated by trash pickup, putting equipment and stages away, and that says that that must end at least by eleven and commence the next day. So we feel comfortable with the Midnight Madness going until midnight. If the commission would like to add a condition of approval restricting that to be the only event, that's something that we could put on the table.
Subject of discussion maybe amongst us here. That's the only one that's, you state clearly, because you go to, obviously midnight goes to midnight and-
Mm-hmm.
... everything else kind of wraps up by your own plans-
By ten, yeah.
-about ten o'clock or so.
Yes.
This one, and a lot of our noise and other issues all wrapped at ten. We went through a big thing on signs, they turn off at ten, so, um, maybe subject of discussion later on about Midnight Madness being the one exception, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, have any other questions of the applicant? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll open up the public hearing and anybody who wants to speak publicly. Do I have any cards?
Close the public hearing.
Madam Secretary, you have everybody's name now, as far as you need for the record. Okay. Okay, that's, uh, open discussion. Mr. Crandall.
Okay, um, after listening to the questions that were asked of the applicant and staff, the events that happen within the mall itself, they've done already. They've done the bark night and all and I'm not concerned with the sound or anything at those and I think they have it under control. The concerns about exiting, I'm hesitant to specify an exit width or anything, but I am very comfortable in saying that any layout should be reviewed by Orange County Fire Authority and the building inspector and let them make the call of how big the exit ways are. We shouldn't take on the liability of saying it needs to be eight feet and when they want twelve, you know.
They're the experts.
They're the experts. Let the experts do it. I'm a little concerned about the wedding venue. It's the one that hasn't been done before. Uh, it's looking at a whole bunch of new houses. I don't think it would be, I don't think it's limited just to weddings, is that correct? It's just an event. So it could grow into a blues festival, who knows what? So until a few are done, uh, I'm a little nervous about what the outcome might be, so I'm almost tempted to say, uh, I mean, we usually say we'll review it after a year and say, but it's awful hard to take something away once something, somebody has something. And I'm almost wondering if that might be considered a special event one for a year, find out how it works, um, because the setup time, we're going to see tents, we're going to see all this stuff up on, I consider the Pico Corridor driving both ways, looking back at the hills as well as coming down, looking at the ocean. And that's going to be right on the biggest corner of the outlet mall and all. And you could have tents, you could have whatever, whatever else. So I'm a little nervous. Talk me out of it, it's fine.
Well, it's outside the enclosure of the mall, so.
It's outside the enclosure of the mall to give a CUP approval indefinitely of having something there at this point. But if, it can be mitigated and they can convince me otherwise, I'm nervous about that one.
You're from Missouri?
Yeah. Um, but I think the other events look good. I don't know how we handle the, the techs and making sure the correct number of guards are there, unless we want to-
Well, we have it, we have it in our CUP, it's just their plan kind of has their management placed in there.
I know, so is that an attachment?
They've got to change their plans.
Is that an attachment to the CUP?
That's what's submitted when an application is first provided, so it gives us our basis to make our comments, but they will be held to the condition of approval of one per seventy-five.
Okay, okay, so I'm, I'm still, uh, have an open mind on this, but I'm, I think they've done a good job on the events they've held and, uh, more than happy with the proposals for the interior events specifically.
Mr. Ruland? Yeah, you, you took a, a lot of the words right out of my mouth. The, uh, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the interior events. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because there's new houses there. The, all of these events have been done the last, you know, about two years now. Um, those houses are still being moved into. Um, I doubt that there's going to be a, a sound impact. Um, I thought maybe a sound study, but it's conditioned pretty well for the, for the sound stuff. I just think we need to be on top of that and make sure that the, those new residents kind of, you know, are, are respected in terms of what they expect in terms of, in moving in there. But I agree that the, that, that lawn area, the wedding venue is kind of a different animal. That looks over that, the North Beach Bowl area as well as more. We know that there's a-
Great view.
Yeah, it is a beautiful view, but it's, uh, it's also visible for thousands of people out there, so I think that there are visual, potentially visual issues, you know, if you set up a screen or if people were doing a little head lighting, depending, it's, it's extremely visible there. That area, too, people who live there know there's a lot of acoustical issues because it's kind of a bowl, so, um, it would not seem that sound might travel a half a mile, but it could. I would feel before we did any events there, a sound study from that area might be in order, um, just because it, it may not be a problem, but I'm, I'm concerned enough where, I know with a lot of rooftop restaurants and bars, we've, we always do sound studies and we worry about people across the street and people five hundred yards away, so this is pretty high up and kind of covers the whole area. So I, I think that's something that we have to take a look at. I, my, my preference would be to, to remove this particular item from, from the approval of the CUP for just the reason you said. We can, you know, condition individual, we can, we can have individual permits for this area, see how it goes, you know, see how things are run.
Special activity permit.
Yeah, special activity permits, um, you know, with, with the understanding of those conditions. There also seems to be an error in the map here. Um, the, there's a kitchen tent listed, um, but that area has permanent structures, permanent electrical structures and such, so, um, it actually, I don't think it could be put there.
Electrical distribution.
Right. So the tent would have to be someplace else, either in the parking lot itself or on the grassy area or something like that, so that's something to consider as well as, you know, that, that'll have to be adjusted or figured out in some way. But, um, but yeah, that would be, that would be my preference, is that we, we pull that out. Other than that, I, I'd like to see us maybe add the condition, the drone condition that says drones have to be kept on-site so they don't go offsite. I don't imagine that would be a problem, but it'd be, probably have a, be a good, good precaution to have. It's a new thing.
Mr. Blackwell.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so I can, I can support that condition to revisit this project, uh, for the valid reasons that have been-
You mean the wedding part of it?
Uh, to revisit the entire CUP. The whole, the whole proposal here, to look at it again in one, Commissioner, Commissioner Crandall made a comment about revisiting this in a year.
Oh, uh, that's our typical-
Yeah.
A little out of context, but you're, you're putting another twist on it. That's fine.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea for the reasons that Commissioner Ruland had mentioned. We've got, um, we've got folks moving in, that there's still a tendency to, to take place in nearby residential uses, and I think it'd be a good idea to look at this in a year, just to see how it's operating, to see how it's functioning.
It's pretty standard, we do that pretty standard for a lot of our things around here. I think we've got a list of them in our book here, right here. Get to carry around.
I think the wedding venue lawn area component is, is a good use of space if, if the elements are, are spaced properly and located in, in the right locations, you know, avoiding any conflicts with infrastructure, power. I would like to see the porta potties moved to a place where they're not visible and a minimum screened from public view, so the folks are, that are looking, thousands of people that, reference, aren't looking at lines of people getting to go potty. So it's a, it's, uh, when a land use is successful, when do we know? You know, when it's built, that's, that's one box that we check. Uh, the next is, in, in my book, when that use, that use starts to contribute in a positive way to the community. And, uh, and the applicant's representative went through all the many, many ways that, that this applicant has done, has done so. And so I'm very happy to see that, uh, from a land use perspective. When land use goes well, it's, it's there, it's, it's on its way, it's got plenty of positive momentum and I can appreciate everything that's happening here. So I'm in support of the project.
Okay. Let me throw a few more remarks in here. I will amplify what you've said, that Craig Realty Group and your management here has come into the community in the last two years and done a lot of positive things into this city and we feel it and I feel it. I'm speaking for myself and the numbers are, are there and they're yours and all the other events you've had. Every dog owner I know loves Barks and Brews. I'm under threat of punishment or something about that if I abuse their dogs. So I, I'm, I'm very comfortable because, particularly the ones you've done and you've done it well. And, uh, I, I am concerned about the wedding venue. Uh, we have a lot of requirements for weddings in town, we have a lot of venues for them, but I think, uh, I'm concerned about that thing. It's outside your enclosure. In other words, you, the whole basic design of this outlet mall was a, is, all the events go inside and that mitigates your noise and, and that's the way it was designed in the twenty-six or twenty-eight design review subcommittee meetings back twenty years ago. But this is the one event that's outside that. And so I'm really concerned about the wedding venue, that, uh, if you want to keep it in your plan, that that be a, a special activity permit, that, that needs to be looked at very closely on a site-by-site, application-by-application basis, just because of where it's located. I know the view is probably spectacular. I agree that when you walk the site there, where the, where the service tent is, where they're going to heat their food, happens to be a little electrical distribution concrete slab there with a few other pertinencies on it that make, maybe a good table, but probably wouldn't be.
Yeah, exactly.
You've got to walk the turf, right? And so, uh, I'm concerned about the wedding event. As long as you clearly understand you have to update your, your security plans, who you have to have on-site to run your events. It's your numbers. You can have a thousand people, you can have so many guards. It's your plan, it's your data, so that's what you've got to live with, that's you, what you applied with. And so I'm comfortable with all the other venues. I like the, the wording and that we make sure things are approved by the fire authority for near a high, high exit area and those positions or conditions of approval and other, and with those type of things and discussion, I'm going to be supportive of the project other than this wedding venue. A little concerned about Midnight Madness being a little late in the evening, but you've already had it and you've done pretty well, good job, you've got a track record, so we'll go with that until, uh, things go otherwise. Commissioner Wu.
I mean, overall, I like this project. I think, you know, we've built a wonderful place and now we need to fill it with lively events. I'm excited to see this happening. Um, I do share the concern on the wedding venue. Uh, it's about, I'd say it's a little over three hundred feet from the nearest residence. Uh, it, it's a visible, it's quite a visible place. So I, I'd recommend that the wedding venue item to be taken out and it can come back as a separate item for the permit. I think it's a little premature to approve, to support that at this moment. Additional condition that I'd like to add is a priority insurance of the permit, any repurpose of a building interior space shall be approved by a city building official and a fire marshal, as well as the, in front of a movie theater, as the applicant has stated, once the movie theater in Oak, in Oak Tree Court is in operation, events in front of the court will not be allowed to set up any temporary structure in front of doing egress. So maybe that's the additional condition we can add to.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, I like the spirit of the project. I like the, the idea of the outlets putting on these events and they're good events and I think it's great for kids to feed crump crackers to reindeers. I fed reindeers cantaloupes when I was a kid, it was a lot of fun. And I know that there's been a lot of events at the outlets that are good for the community and I'm all for all that. But I am not for schemes that put our residents in potential danger with exiting schemes that don't work. And I cannot support the schemes that are shown on the plans with elements in front of the, of the doorways. And, and just words aren't going to appease me, I'm not going to support it. I think you need to go back to the drawing boards and rethink it. I think you need to think about what you're doing here, because I don't think that was thought through when it came to us. There's been a lot of tragedies in this country about things panicking and people exiting spaces and they can't get out. And it's a very serious, real problem. And for us to approve this, we want to make sure that the events that you have are safe and they're done wisely. And so I guess I'm not feeling that good about the wedding venue either. I think the idea of taking that off the plan right now is probably a good idea. I think the porta potty location is really not very well. I think there's some other valid issues there. So I'm for, at this point, taking that off as well as the venues that show stages and screens in front of exit ways. Some of your venues are done in such a way that they look safe to me, but I'm not going to support it as it is now. So I'm, I'm going to say, I really think you ought to come back and clean up the act. I think we all need to make sure that we're doing the right thing here and we're seeing stuff that's not quite right. Everybody said there are certain things they don't like, and I think it's time to go back to the drawing boards to sharpen the pencil.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think I sense a consensus for moving forward with certain conditions over and above what Mr., Commissioner Smith has stated. So is there any other discussion on, on this issue from other commissioners compared to what's already been said?
Well, just to, just to summarize, it sounds like, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like we want to remove the wedding venue request. We want to add in a, do we want to add in a review after one year? Have them just come back and okay?
We've done that pretty, that's pretty routine for a lot of projects, particularly as large as this one, that's probably appropriate.
Is there agreement on my little thing with the drones? Just making sure that the drones, any drones flying remain?
Exactly along anyway, you can't fly over the residential.
Is there?
Or the freeways, but I think you've got two or three conditional use permits, we have a city ordinance on drones now. Theoretically, the drone operator's got an FA license and stuff like that, so.
Okay, maybe it's not needed, but we've never done a condition with a drone before, so.
We don't want their drone providing video to Channel 5 news for the action on the 5 freeway.
And with the, with the safety thing, I like the point that you made of leaving it to the experts, but we can put in a condition that says that it's got to be, any, any stages or equipment or what have you must conform to, I don't know, what, what the right language would be, must conform to fire marshal, sheriff, what have you.
Building and building.
Building.
Building and fire marshal.
Okay.
So we could strengthen it by just adding into the satisfaction of the building and building official and fire marshal.
Which, which item number would that be?
That'd be 23.
Okay.
So that's, those are the ones I, I heard. Did we capture anything? Any staff, you have some notes that part?
I think, I think Shen also and- Michael also, on the interior spaces also need to be reviewed by-
The fashion show type issue?
Any vacant spaces that are being repurposed for occupancy need to be reviewed by fire authority and-
Building.
Building.
I'm sorry, any vacant spaces that are-
Any of the interior spaces?
Any-
That are being repurposed. No, it was a- Store number 105 gets repurposed for a fashion show, so now you've got 300 people in there sitting down.
So that needs inspection by?
Fire authority, building authority.
Building official and-
Compared to-
Fire marshal.
Compared to, that space could be used for some tennis shoes, so you wouldn't have so many people in there.
Okay.
Do we have to go forward? With that, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner Ruhland, if you want to.
I'll give it a try. Interject whenever you want, so.
So I, I'll do that right now.
Okay.
The fire marshal should just be OCFA, that's the standard language, so for your motion, Orange County Fire Authority, not the fire marshal.
All right. So I will move that we approve Resolution Number PC 18-001, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente approving conditional use permit 16-349, a request for outdoor events with sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages for the outlets at San Clemente located at 101 West Avenue to Vista Hermosa with the removal of the request for the wedding venues with condition, it's a new condition for the review, right? So it would be new condition 47, that the CUP be reviewed by the Planning Commission after one year. Modification to condition 15, that drones must remain inside the property lines of the malls. With the, was it the structural one, was that in addition to an existing CUP or a new one?
23.
23?
23 was during our-
Okay. And with the addition of the change in condition 23, that any internal structure, any, any internal use that is a change of use conformed to OCFA, sheriff and building department requirements.
Is it repurposed? I think any temporary use, because that's not a permanent use. Any temporary repurposing for a special event be approved by the OCFA and the building authority.
That's, that's, what you just said is the text I'm proposing to add to 23, so. Correct. That's in addition to, add that sentence to the end of item 23.
Addition 23.
Addition 23.
You agree with that?
And?
Yeah, I agree.
You weren't even doing it for 30 years, so.
And was that the last one? Oh, any stages or outdoor stages or structures must conform to the safety requirements of OCFA, the sheriff's department and the building department. That would be a new condition 48.
Okay. That's, do we have a, Commissioner City Planner, you have something to inject as we go? We have a motion and almost a second on the table.
It's just a clarification for the applicant's purposes. They just had a question on the CUP and if it was one year after, for one year, and I just wanted to verify, yes, it's a review of the CUP after one year, and that's without wedding venues, it's just the CUP in its entirety.
That's pretty standard. The CUP continues, it's just a review by this body.
By one year.
Yeah. And that's typically done on a consent calendar format.
Consent calendar. We have several in our book. There's a restaurant down by the DMV that's coming up for a one-year review. It's nothing, it's not, nothing out of the ordinary, it's probably new to you, but it's something we routinely-
Even Writers Club has that, so.
They're delicious.
He's a charter member down there.
That's right.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by, pardon me.
Could you have a second?
Nope. I have a motion by Ruhland and a second by Crandall.
I have a question on number 23.
Okay.
That the start of the condition should say to the satisfaction of building official and OCFA.
Sheriff's.
And the sheriff's department on number 23. At the start.
At the end. See, at the end. It's at the end.
At the end.
To the satisfaction of the-
Yeah.
And that's for-
Repurposing.
That's for, right, when internal spaces are being temporarily used.
Okay, and then there was another revision that-
Commissioner Blackwell.
Commissioner Blackwell suggested to put in, after if occupancy is reached, any structure adjacent to temporary use.
I didn't, I didn't add that one. I thought that we were doing the one with the, where any new structures like temporary screens and such had to be approved by OCFA. That, that, I thought that's what we had agreed on, but, you know.
I think we're okay.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes 5-0-1. Good luck. See you in a year. Hopefully not.
See you later in the year.
You will.
Which the revised?
Okay. What do you need?
I think Jim probably just- Oh, there's the next one here. Oh, I'm playing.
There we go. Commissioner Tally will volunteer his. Okay, there, item nine, there is no new business, there is no old business on 10. Reports of commissioners and staff from the Public Safety Task Force, we have not had a meeting scheduled yet this month. We just got a questionnaire in the mail we have to take electronically, I should say. There are going to be four parts on the matrix study for the commissioners and the city manager, the city manager reminded me to do my homework and take my test or fill out the questionnaire tonight. So we don't have an actual date established yet for that. Anything from any other coastal advisory committee or any, any other things to bring up? Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to report on the last coastal advisory committee. There was a presentation made by an organization in Laguna Beach that's involved with helping the kelp grow back. And it was a very interesting presentation, they're looking for volunteers. They're also involved with trying to get the abalone to come back, growing abalone and things like that. So it was a, it was a bunch of really good things to try to heal the ocean and I can pass along the information and the website if you're interested, I'll give it to Amber and she can email it around. But it's a lot of good people working really hard to turn the ocean around locally, because we've lost most of the kelp and the kelp that's coming back has been planted. So we're lucky that these people are doing what they're doing.
Reef is a success. Tended to future agenda, we have nothing for the 7th of February, so we're going to adjourn to the 21st. And then beyond that, if I look here, things are kind of blank, but if I look at the other Amy's schedule here with zoning ordinances and other issues, we can bring that on as fast as you can bring it.
Yes, that's a goal, yeah.
Commissioner Ruhland.
I was just going to-
Oh, one final issue, I think we do have the Coastal Commission review of our land use plan, our local coastal plan in Cambria in a couple of weeks, what is it, February?
So the Coastal Commission meetings go for three days, so they go Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, and we won't know exactly where we're at on the agenda until probably the end of this week or next week.
What's the date of that?
7th, 8th and 9th.
Of February in Cambria.
Of February in Cambria, yes.
I attended the one here in Dana Point with members and other members of staff and our, the Lawton Legal Group from Capistran of Shores and who had something of that thick that they wanted to enter into the record. It's probably as thick as your stack if you kept that stuff for 40 meetings we had. We partnered with them, they gave us a grant, even their consultants that formerly worked up there were, I was, when I read through the whole thing, I don't know if we can, you can send a link to the commissioners that, for what, you know, their staff report, because a lot of us worked on that, it was two years ago. This coming month, the city council actually passed it, two and a half years ago, and we finally, we went, what, four or five meeting weeks straight to get that, get that thing done. I thought we'd produced a pretty darn, a great document, passed it. Council finally agreed. And then our partners who gave us a grant to write the thing, sat down and wrote themselves a year extension and did an extensive rewrite. When I, when I went through it, I was in shock of the changes that the staff has been trying to deal with, they work with their staff and move them back into our direction. There's some changes in there that are pretty, pretty disturbing. So if you could send all of us and the commissioner a link to their, because they've done, they did a kind of a track chain strikeout thing and to re-review it, let's see.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. And that staff report is, I think, about 700 pages, just to let you know.
It is, 681 or something like that.
I, I think when you review it, the first part is how it was submitted originally, you've got to get to the back, so you can just scroll through and then you'll see all the red lines of the suggested modifications, is what they're technically called on there. The first meeting was, since it was in Dana Point, we had asked that they hold it here so that way we could get a lot more public input, because the coastal commission meetings are held up and down the California coast. And so they did do that and allowed public input to be received, and then the final decision has to be made at the February meeting.
It's sort of by their own time. And what happened that day is they moved us back to the last item on the schedule to move Laguna Beach in front of us. And there, they wanted amendment to their land use plan, or was it their implementation plan, I forget. But it was an STLU VRVO issue where Laguna Beach had, basically what we heard earlier, they, their change was to completely move them out of the president. Anyway, it became a long discussion and they got moved ahead of us to the point where we got squeezed at the end where there was very limited, normally they allow you five minutes to talk, you can, you know, gang or defer time, and everybody was given like one minute or two minutes, because it was late and they only had the room until, so we, we, City of San Clemente, I thought, got severely shortchanged by the coastal commission on the presentation and the concerns. So, anyway, it's coming up and soon, and I know you're going to go up there, and so we'll discuss.
Cecily and I will be going up there to the meeting, and we have been working very diligently, constantly, in fact, with the coastal commission for the last several weeks, trying to hash out the concerns that we have and come up with some.
There, there's some considerable concerns and rightly so, in my view. Okay, enough.
Can you confirm that we're case of the meeting will be canceled?
Yes, that meeting will be canceled.
We'll adjourn to the 21st of February tonight.
And one more question for you. When are we going to start to see some of these floating future, future items that are just kicking that can again? Are we going to try to pick any one of those or some of those? Since we have some in the-
Flip to the TFA real quick.
Well, once again, it's staff time to put-
Are you getting, are you getting bored, Commissioner Blackwell? Are we not keeping you challenged?
Like wireless regulation?
Yes.
Discussion on home based business?
Home based business? Ooh.
Sequoia?
Home based business would be a huge undertaking.
Yes, I know.
Anyway.
There are some big items that are going to be coming forward to the Planning Commission. A lot of those are zoning ordinance updates, specific plan updates that need to get done as part of this LCP, local coastal plan process. So there's other cleanup items too that are-
I rushed it tonight because we're in a study session format for that one thing to relook at next. I prefer in the future that we have a full session so we can do a slow page turn and really, fortunately, we got the staff briefing four days in advance, it was very well done. You know, as usual, I read every line and it was a trip down memory lane, but for some of you, it might have been a little different. But in the future, I'd like to not be compressed on that time for, for that. Okay, let's give it a wrap. Anybody want to motion for adjournment?
I'll move that we adjourn to the next Planning Commission meeting, which should be held at 6:00 PM on February 21st, 2018. Excuse me.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission, do we want to say the Planning Commission Study Session? So I move adjourn to the, to the next Planning Commission Study Session, which should be held at 6:00 PM on February 21st, 2018, in Council Chamber of City Hall located at 109 Avenue Presidio, San Clemente, California.
A motion adjourned, we have a second. Second by Smith, motion by Ruhland, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0. See you in a month or so.
Good luck in Cambria.
Good luck in Cambria.